Okay. It is now two P M. So I will call to order the regular meeting. For today being Tuesday, March twelfth, two thousand point four at two P M. This is a regular meeting, so we do have an other business section which we'll get to. Before that, we have a regular agenda. We easily have a quorum today, so I'll move into the first item. The first item to cover is the approval of the A D P minutes from one, three, two thousand twenty-four. We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. A discussion on the minutes from one, three, two thousand twenty-four. Okay, seeing that there is no discussion, I will call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Alright, the motion stands approved. We have an extension by the chair. Okay. The next agenda item is agenda item number two is the approval of the A D P organizational meetings from one, eight, two thousand twenty-four. This was again the organizational meeting before. Look for a motion. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Is the motion is there a second? Second. Any discussion on the meeting minutes from one, eight, two thousand twenty-four in the organizational meeting? Seeing that there is no discussion, I will call for a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? We have one extension, two extensions. Being that there's enough votes, the motion stands, the minutes are approved. Agenda item number three is the approval of the A D P special meeting minutes from one, eight, two thousand twenty-four. After the organizational meeting, we had a special meeting to discuss business that came up versus having that at the organization. So I'll look for a motion for approval.
Awesome.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion from the meeting minutes of the special meeting following the organization? Alright, seeing that there's no discussion, I will call for a vote on that. All in favor of approving the meeting minutes from the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four meeting as submitted, say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Standing. Two extensions. Chair. Alright, meeting minutes stand approved. Alright, agenda item number four is the approval of the A D P approval list from December of two thousand twenty-three through February of two thousand twenty-four. The motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second.
Can I ask some questions?
Absolutely.
I had a question about an item on here under the commissioners pertaining to what we pay for the eleventh district court of appeals. And I'm just wondering why that's on this list. What equipment is involved with that? But I just don't know.
So, right, this is number, yeah, it's number nine, but because when they do the equipment list, they just take any dispersment as A D P involvement. So that everybody can see what money is being spent. Because the eleventh district court reveals utilizes utilizes some of their funding from the county's technology. The board approved the dispersment.
Understood.
This does not mean that that item has been purchased necessarily. This is initial A D P. Some of these items were never purchased, but if we've initially approved, or has really verified that.
Okay. Also, there's a report of elections. Their security system?
Yes.
You're approving option one and two and three with three different vendors, and I wondered if you could just explain that.
They provided options from A D T Guardian and Gilmore. We reviewed all three of them and approved all three of them because they supported with our minimum requirement. And therefore, it has the ability to that approve.
So this isn't mean your, this is going to be spent. It just means it's okay with you if they pick any one of them.
Correct.
Yeah, that's that's just the approval list. It's not the purchase list. Not all of this gets purchased.
This is the purchase list.
This is the equipment list.
This is the next one. She's pointing the next one.
Yeah.
This is the initial approvals. So in the B O E case, because all three of those systems met approval, the board did not want to go through their process with one and then find out later on that we weren't comfortable with it. But all three systems were good. If you review all three, I don't know if you've chosen one yet, but.
Yeah, we chose Gilmore.
You went with Gilmore.
One last question, please. It has to do with the Westlaw contracts for the law library. Is that an annual thing?
Yes.
And does anybody else use it besides the law librarian?
The law librarian has very little use of it. They brokered on behalf of the prosecutor, the public defender, the courts.
Perfect. That's what I was hoping you would say.
Yeah, prosecutor, public defender, courts. And then the law library has two terminals that the lawyers and the public use.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the equipment list from December of twenty-three through February twenty-four? Being that there is no further discussion, we already have a motion. Second, I will call for a vote. All in favor of approving the equipment list as provided, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? Motion stands approved. Item number five is the approval of the A D P purchase list from December of twenty-three through February twenty-four. These items were actually purchased. I will call or look for a motion to approve.
Awesome.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, Sheila. Alright, we have a second. Discussion on the purchases from December of two thousand twenty-three through February twenty-four. Alright, seeing that there is no discussion. A motion in a second. Call for a vote. All in favor of approving the equipment list as provided, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion stands approved. Thank you. Alright, number six is the approval of the A D P star seven, six service now implementation, not to be confused with seven, which is the licensing for it. I will turn this over to Michael Thompson, A D P, to give a quick overview. But essentially, what A D P does is we use a service desk. It's actually the name of it. It's a product that integrates all of our technology in the county. It's the help desk ticketing. It's where everything comes in. It's the heartbeat sort of of what A D P uses and how we categorize everything. That system is has been outdated for a little bit now. We're looking at an upgrade. We are, we're essentially in the initial review of this. Michael's been through a lot of it, but we haven't sort of pushed up. We clearly need the team yet for final review. But before we go any further.
You have to leave that open. It's got to stay open.
Yes.
All the way because it's a public meeting.
Sorry, I'm catching all their audio.
Yeah. Um, we could open that back door. It may help move the.
Oh, it's not air. It's catching their audio. So it'll be on the record. Yeah.
What are you gonna do?
Okay, so basically what we're looking at is approving the technology so we can continue further in the process. So before we get to any of the voting, I'll turn it over to Michael to give just a quick overview on the implementation side, and I guess he can do the licensing.
I can go over both of them. Hello, everybody. So star seven, six, we'll be doing our implementation for ServiceNow, and ServiceNow's platform is very expandable than what we have currently now. So A D P is pretty much the only folks that are using our ticketing system. With ServiceNow, we would also be including support I T folks as well as sheriff I T, so we'll be all using one system to categorize tickets. As well as push it through. It also helps centralize and keep track of all of our hardware and software asset management as well. There's a lot of questions that can then, when somebody has an A D P approval for, I gotta buy, I have a new person who's working for me, but I don't know how many licenses I have. For us, it's very difficult right now. We have to check several databases that we have, Excel spreadsheets, you name it, and you know, we have to try to find that out. It's very time consuming. So by doing that, we can integrate everything into one process. Another nice thing about ServiceNow is it's integratable with every current system that we have. So that includes CrowdStrike. You can actually port our information from CrowdStrike right into ServiceNow. It'll integrate with new ticketing for that as well. It'll also allow us to get a better grip on uni billing. That has been the biggest problem that we have altogether. We have sometimes spent a few months trying to put it together because we are manipulating with spreadsheets. Manipulating spreadsheets from right at a service desk and try to make it look neat and tidy for a municipality who's looking at it. So now by this, the data is inputted, ServiceNow will complete and hold it all together as one piece. And by the click of a button in a PDF format, a bill is generated and can be sent directly out. So everything is done in one piece. And this also goes into, you know, helps keep track of our other servers and other asset management that we have as well.
Any questions on the initial implementation?
So will this allow for like townships, villages to be able to see their tickets?
Yes.
Okay, so that we're gonna, there'll be a portal that somebody can get.
And into your point as well, if I may, um, yes, that allows every user in the county will be able to see their tickets. If there's a managerial thing that everybody, the manager wants to see their tickets, they can as well. If we have an outside vendor, they can be given a third party access into that, which will still have two-step authentication and a very long, complex password, so they can view their tickets as well.
Will people be able to query the database for common problem?
Yes.
So, so blue screen, you could Google or you could query blue screen and get all of the solutions to blue screen. And they can not have to call potentially, they could.
It's it's a lot of self-service, and one of the things that we'll be doing as well is there's an integration in Microsoft Teams. You can actually chat with a virtual agent. And it'll actually start bringing up problems. You can open tickets, close tickets, check your tickets.
And we're not A I-ing this. We're using actual people, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's it's just mostly there is kind of a first level deflection.
Got it. So these folks, this is more than just the service ticket system. This is more of a C R M. Right, it's it's really managing customers. Yeah, okay. But it's just, which is why the price is significantly different. You're you're doing both ends.
Yes.
We only did one end before.
It's potentially more than that. It potentially has the ability to integrate with H R I S for the county too, and run all of human resources through it as well. Nobody has an H, well, I think health has an H R I S system.
J F S.
J F S has an H R I S. Other than that, everybody else is just metal filing cans.
We can also integrate also with Esri maps as well, so there's also a mapping portion that can be added.
I'm assuming this is cloud-based.
Yes, it is all SaaS.
Okay.
I have a question. Is it very user-friendly?
Yes.
Okay.
Very user-friendly.
Do you use Abacus? You ever use an Abacus?
It's like New World. It's a cake.
And on top of that, too, if it helps each portal that a user signs into, so specifically if you're kind of under the county umbrella, so prosecutor is an example. You know, you will see the Georgia County branded type of portal. But if you're under the sheriff's office, you'll have a sheriff's portal that they'll see sheriff's related things. So you may not want to see Spelman, but that might be something that a sheriff's office wants to, sheriff's office person wants to see. Same thing with the courts, court view and those types of things.
Can these, can certain tickets be shielded?
Yes.
Okay, no, they're all broken down with it.
So you can set the priority on the ticket saying, I don't want exposure, potential hacking.
Correct. If you're the prosecutor, you can only see the prosecutor environment. Any other questions? Thank you, Mike. So reference to item number seven.
I moved week two, six and seven.
The motion to approve six and seven, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving items number six and seven, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? Alright, motion stands approved.
How soon will this be implemented, Michael?
We have, we haven't even got.
Okay.
This will be a massive undertaking.
Twenty twenty-four, you hope?
That would be optimistic.
Okay.
By the end of the year, maybe?
Okay.
Possible.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not gonna overpromise this one. It's a big undertaking. How long is service desk been working for the county on?
Since the mouse died.
So we have about eighteen, nineteen years of data. Moving on to agenda item number eight. This is the approval of the A D P spectrum circuit for the annex. I will let Andy talk quickly.
Yes.
It's getting warm.
It's just heating up.
Should we open the back? Would it help open the back door? Yeah, we, could you do that without breaking your legs? Okay, everything opens here wide open.
We've got quite a few circuits around the county, going to places like First Two, Four Seventy, like with places like that. So we're looking to bring in a new spectrum circuit here at the annex. The current circuit is configured in such a way that we can't use it how we need to going forward. So we're gonna bring in a new circuit and then take that circuit and the money we were spending on it and use it somewhere else where one of our accounts is able to be deactivated. So it's just kind of a shift. So it's probably have an overlap of two months while the new circuit goes in and another one gets sent to somewhere else.
It's just gonna be able to support the new courthouse?
Yes.
Is that, that's part of what this was?
Yeah, this circuit will be used for the annex, second, third floor, uni court, Chardon, courthouse, opera house, those are all sites that would go through this circuit.
Four Seventy's on a different part of the ring, correct?
Actually, Four Seventy comes back here right now.
So there's a return loop, if I remember correctly. Didn't, we didn't, we have two lines running and one was returned? Remember that, Alan?
Yeah, it's really spoken.
Yeah, it's, yeah, Four Seventy also coming back through the circuit, just like they are now.
Okay.
But the the circuit we have is new spectrum and we're able to repurpose it somewhere else.
Any, any further questions at the spectrum circuit for the annex?
So this is five year?
Yes, and that state contract.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving agenda item number eight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? Motion stands approved. Okay, we will move on to agenda item number nine. This is the approval of the V O C C Trumbull County Honor Eleventh District Court of Appeals Agreement.
Yeah, we pay a proportionate percentage of the court of appeals operating costs according to population. So we pay the smallest, still the smallest portion, but so we're falling behind us. So because some of it's used for technology, I think they made the decision to have the front three A D P, but it's something we've been doing forever.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
How do we get credits?
How do we get?
How did we get credits? Just because they wanted to feel nice to us?
What?
The five thousand dollars?
Well, what was that for?
Is that what they pay for us to be the clerk? What is that? Is that the credit?
I mean, I'm not complaining.
Is that they have to, they pay, they have to give you money, right?
Right. Part of my salary.
And so I thought, is there another, maybe they have the credit for that? I don't know.
Does it happen every year?
It's been a while.
The credits, I don't know. I didn't look at last year's.
I can speak to that if you want. So they charge us based on what the budget is. And depending on how the the previous year's budget comes out, whether they're below their budget or above their budget, they will do credits based on what everybody paid. So it's like their unused allocation is what they end up crediting.
So it's a forward-looking expense?
Yes, except for the credit, the credit.
That's retrospectively applied.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, number ten is the approval of the engineers' Illuminati Lab cellular enhancement. That's what we call. The V O C C had Independence Construction contract with Illuminati Labs. We provide cellular enhancement to the new office building. And I mean, we've been doing that a year now. That was actually a total success. It's one of those things where we got exactly what we paid for.
Yeah.
Which it was good. Somewhat surprising still, but very happy with it. Don't need to complain about the cell service. It's been very good. So I think the engineer heard that and they thought they were gonna do it over their area because that that rating of their reputation is pretty dead over there. So I don't think you want to add to that.
No, that's it.
I remember looking at it. It's, uh, it's roughly fifty-one, fifty-two thousand. So the V O C C one was, I think, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
This includes hardware though, right?
You guys are just a smaller campus.
Do you know what recurring costs are?
I don't think there's any.
There's no recurring cost. This is essentially a hardware purchase, and then once all the answers get up there.
Interesting, a little size of her.
Yep. Yeah, it's been surprisingly very resilient and solid thus far. So it looks like you guys just want to copy the same thing.
We do. I mean, primarily even in the highway, you know, with snow haulers and things like that, a lot of times you guys have to step outside these. Because the cell service in the facility is so terrible.
It is all stable.
I listen, I'm on the third floor, it's probably the highest one we've counted myself. Like working at the town. Oh, I don't, that's why I asked how much it was. It's a little rich for my blood.
Well, they go by. Do us campus square footage, so they're covering your whole campus.
We may have to do it when the courthouse goes in, depending on what that construction does to the.
Yeah, cell phones.
It's terrible in that building. Always has been.
Maybe because of the walls, the walls are so bad.
And we may, we may have to do something, but we'll wait till after that.
Well, that's the beauty of this system. It actually runs up through and then brings nodes all the way down through the populated. It's been very good so far.
Maybe we should throw that in the bed initially?
Would it cover all of here?
No, you'd have to run another, need more hardware over here, but.
You would need more hardware.
They may be able to consider this part of the complex, which.
That's what they're doing for you. They're picking one building to put one main antenna, and then they're connecting all of your, you have two, three other buildings.
But we would need to know that now because we'd have to run something over, right, Andy? I mean, you'd have to run something.
I can't imagine running an antenna cable.
That far. You may have to get two antennas. Maybe we should look into it now before the construction's underway.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, this company has been excellent to work with and really helpful.
Yeah. Even the building itself, the phones wouldn't work at all. Now, they're, they're work great. I mean, that's like one of the best spots in the county.
And you guys did a little differently on this one. You built in the whole future proofing, so that if you do expand, if you go all, there, there's basically capped off nodes everywhere that they can then add on to, which is really smart. So you'll be taking care so we're not using cell phones anymore. I don't know. Chip that's, I don't know, something like that. So, okay, so that's the Illuminati Labs contract. I don't think I called for a motion on that.
Awesome.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a second. Any further discussion on the Illuminati Labs purchase for the coming year? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. No extensions. Motion stands approved. Okay, so now we are at the two Westlaw contracts. I'm guessing, based on how we've done today, the board might want to consider these two at the same time. Crystal, can you just give us a quick overview? For those of you who don't know, Crystal Thompson, she's the law librarian. She's been with the county now since two thousand seventeen. So if you just want to give a quick overview.
The Westlaw contracts are to cover legal research databases for the law library, prosecutor's office, public defender's office, and the court.
I'll make a motion to approve, which item? Eleven and twelve?
Is there a second? Alright, we have a motion to approve eleven and twelve and a second. Any further discussion on the Westlaw contracts? Seeing there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All in favor of approving items eleven and twelve, the law library, Westlaw Publishing contracts, one and two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Any extensions? Motion stands approved for items eleven and twelve. Alright, item number thirteen is the approval of the Sheriff's Windstream Amendment to upgrade their internet to one gig. Call for a motion on that one. Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any discussion or, Jared, if you'd like to provide an overview, I don't know. Andy's pretty intimate with the project. Andy, do you want to give any information?
They've got a very modest fifty megabyte circuit, and the N D Ts in the field use this. Various other things, their phone system, and so it's just time to get it up to a higher speed now. And we can use it for even more things, so they're not dependent on coming back up through the annex. So less points of failure. Love your service.
Thank you. Alright, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion of this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. No extensions. Item number fifteen stands approved. Alright, item number fourteen is the approval of the developmental disabilities L G C A contract. We have Don Rice and his staff here. If you want to give a quick overview of that, she certainly will.
Back before COVID, we had two staff people who were on staff who were actually providing the maintenance and care of our computers and making sure everybody's computers were up. During COVID, we decided to let the two folks go and share with L G C A, who is actually splitting us right now with middle, middlefield Cardinal schools. This is just paying their staff for two days a week. The two guys in the building, two days.
Questions, comments, discussion?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I have a question about the dates. Yes. It was beginning July first of twenty-three through June thirty of twenty-four.
This was something that I guess we were made aware of in September, that it had not been approved by the L G C A, I mean, by the A D P board back in June. And then they, they didn't know about it until September, so then we came to find out. It had been here twice since in order to get it. I guess at some point Jim got a Attorney General's kind of opinion, kind of coming off of something that that indeed had to come here for the approval. So that's why we're here for the approval.
Yeah, he asked the Attorney General whether whether the mental health board or M R D D fell under A D P. He said M R D D does, mental health board does not.
So my only concern with this contract is it's a, it appears to be a three-way contract between E S C of Western Reserve, Metzenbaum, and this Lake County Computer Association. And in the scope, it, I mean, it, it's clear it's written around a school district, not around a county government. It's, one of its scope is to promote the professional image of customer's school district. Which, I mean, the problem I have is we don't have any authority. We have no agreement with Cardinal or any school districts. So I don't know how we enjoin ourselves in a three-way contract with that entity. I mean, I mean, what if, what if the school does something that's nefarious?
E S C is the oversight body. L G C A is a sub-entity.
Yeah, I know what E S C is, but again, E S C is not, although they're a political subdivision, they're not part of the county. They're not under A D P. We have no, they can do whatever they want. They can hook into anything, put Chinese cameras out. They can do anything they want, and we can't tell them not to. So we're hooking in with a non-oversight entity to have oversight. So how do, how do we do that? How do we, how do we make sure that nothing nefarious is occurring that's under the authority of A D P when we have a person that's party to this contract that has absolutely, doesn't have to bring anything to A D P? They can just tell this company, hey, I want you to put these cameras in. And and they're reporting to China.
But this doesn't have anything to do with equipment. We have another contract that you've already approved that has the equipment side of things.
I understand that, but it has to do with workstation. So what, let's say they have cameras somewhere and they just want to connect to those cameras, which then connects that workstation to China. How do we ensure that that's not?
Any equipment that they're hooking in has already come here for approval. In other words, when we wanted mice or computer screens, we've brought them to you for approval, and that's what, that's what they'd be hooking to.
I'm not talking about your stuff. I'm talking about E S C stuff.
I don't know how you would go about seeing what E S C does. It doesn't do any more than Spectrum, Spectrum, what they would log into or not log into.
Well, Spectrum doesn't have any, any ability to log into our stuff.
But I mean, it, I don't know. But I mean, it, I don't know, I don't know how far we would be able to push that. This is something that they've been involved with us since, oh boy. Before two thousand eleven for sure, because they're the ones who brought in the fiber optics into our place through uh one community way more than a decade ago. I'm not sure what rules the ESC follows from a school point of view, but it'd be something that it'd be all of Lake County and all of Giogu County school districts that we're involved with.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's my concern.
My concern was, I just didn't see, like, so it's ninety seven thousand dollars, but that includes, you're just getting two days a week of that?
Two guys, two days a week, so.
I mean, there's no breakdown that, that this two day, it doesn't make any sense to me, like.
Uh, we were, when we had two staff, that was a lot higher than these guys being there. And I agree that we were getting ten days a week instead of the equivalent of eight, four days a week. But at the time, we were looking at how we could save money by reducing our staff at the time, because we found that most of the people were remote anyhow. So doing things remotely were where we went with this and were to not have two staff onboard.
I, I think you, you're acting like I'm questioning the reason you did this. I'm not. And I, maybe it was a great decision. I'm questioning, I'm uncomfortable as an ADP board approving a contract where it's not parsed out exactly what you, MRDD's get, or you have to get approval from us. So I guess what? Three fifths of this contract has nothing to do with ADP. I, I'm not seeing the breakdown. Like, if you, I'm, if you bring me a contract that says, hey, we're contracting with you for two guys, two days a week, and it's X amount of money, and it has nothing to do with Cardinal or the ESC or anybody else, I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, well, there's the issue of why just ADP doing it, but but if ADP's fine with it, then I'm fine with it. But I guess I don't like, there's no accountability here and there's no breakdown. And I'm very uncomfortable with, I don't, how often do these guys hear? How many hours are they giving you versus giving them? I, I don't like, it seems like a shell game. I'm, I'm just being honest with you.
I, I can tell you their office is right next to mine and I know when they're in, because our walls are thin enough that I can hear them in the office and they can hear me. Um, I don't know if you want to see their time sheets or something like that. I.
No, I want a separate contract between you and them. That, that has nothing to do with entities that we don't have any authority. That's, that's what I want.
What are these, this two days a week? What if you miss a week? Is it cumulative?
No, they, they've actually done it in such a way that when we've had something big going on, where we're doing a changeover or something, they've been at our building more, particularly during the summertime when Cardinal's not in place. But then they'll spend time at Cardinal because Cardinal is busy with summertime when they're getting everything ready before school starts. We may not see them for that week except remotely.
Well, so who, so who's tracking all that? Who's keeping track that you're getting two, where you're getting the equivalent of two days a week for forty six weeks?
Dave, the answer is through you.
So, I mean, I, I can only reference how we do it. I mean, I, how they do it. They're sending people to service workstations. We don't do that. Everything we do is remote. Unless there's some severity level that requires on-prem. So, I mean, you know, much of this could be replaced with no people, right? You could use service engines in the computer that allow people to, that you trust, that can come in, diagnose the machine, fix it. You, you release credential to them and then you get it back when you're done. Are they doing that?
They are doing that. They're, they're doing things remote, when staff are working remote. However, in our experience, we found that a lot of our staff still need hands-on assistance, particularly with printers and things of that nature. Or the computer's not working the way that it should, or, you know, whatever it may be. Uh, we've attempted to get our staff uh more up to speed, so that we can do more remote support. But ultimately, things do break and sometimes they need hands-on assistance. So that's why when we initially looked at this arrangement, we insisted on on-prem availability.
And, and so there's, there's configuring your servers, correct?
Right.
What cred, what credential criteria do you require?
In terms of server access?
Yeah.
So we've got MFA on server access. Um, we've got complex password requirements.
Who's MFA and what is your criteria for server password?
So I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I know that it's complicated. Um, I know that the MFA is run through Microsoft Authenticator. But LGCA, we also have separate agreement with them for our hosted, you know, kind of solutions. Uh, LGCA is, has been hosting our stuff remotely for a few years now at this point. And that contract has come through PDP for approval. And just to kind of clarify the entities that are at play here, Cardinal happens to be where the gentlemen that come to our building go on the days when they aren't here. But this agreement is not an agreement with Cardinal. LGCA, yeah, it's, it is an agreement between us and LGCA, which is a subentity of ESC of Western Reserve. So I wanted to clarify that.
So the ninety seven thousand's just for your component, correct? And then are they servicing anybody other than county computers? I know there's other folks that are in the building. Are they doing any computer work for them?
They, they do some computer work for some of our nonprofit partners.
People you're renting to?
Yes, but it's very, very limited.
What about wifi?
Yeah, they configure wifi to take care of all those things.
And so this vendor's always in your network? See, we've had bad experience with that. I mean, this just shockingly reminds me.
Work for a county entity under contract.
Well, you normally letting an outside vendor into your backbone usually is on a prescribed basis. You, you expect them in there to do so, you know, a certain degree of work. And you, you create an environment that they're in for a time window and then they're forced out, right? That protects your network. I, I have problems just in what I've experienced at, at the county with this open door policy for vendors. It's just dangerous. It, you, you can't, you know, this board can't be assured, no matter how good the vendor is, that they conform to the standard that we are holding the rest of the county to. And therefore, you're only as good as your weakest link. And, and that my worry is, this has got a lot of questions as to, I don't know what their credential requirements are. We've witnessed vendors who have no passwords and yet they're telling their customers, you need to be secure with passwords. What good is that if they're the ones in there, you know?
Which nonprofit vendors are they doing work for?
It's, it's really just, hey, how do I get logged into this thing? It's uh the Metzenbaum Foundation is our, is our main one. Everybody else who's in our building is, they have their own IT that they don't touch.
They're not using your wifi or your backbone or any of it?
They are segmented off from our backbone.
But they're you, but you're providing them IT services?
Uh, in terms of uh internet access, yes, otherwise.
But this, this company is only providing, they're only doing work outside of for you guys for Metzenbaum Foundation?
Yes.
But that's a private entity.
And the only thing they would be doing, because the foundation isn't necessarily, they may allow the access to a printer so that the foundation could print something off and it would be their computers accessing their printers.
Well, that means they're on your backbone.
Would you feel better if we would go back to hiring a person and having a staff person in? Our staff are certainly at times competent, but we don't have a bunch of computer folks. We have case managers and knowing how to operate computers is something that doing it remotely works for some, but for most of our folks is not enough.
I, I'd feel better if ADP took a look at the footprint at MRDD and gave us an analysis. Which may be, this is great. It may be, here's some problems we see, because that's who I'm going to hold responsible if something happens.
So you're talking having Frank come in or Alan or something?
Well, we'll have, I mean, we'll decide which person is, I mean, we're gonna have a network person there and probably a cyber analyst there. We may even have online security help us out.
I think in terms of your server infrastructure, I mean, it all sounds good, complex passwords, long, you know, and the thing, whatnot. Do you have the credentials for that or is that just with the vendor? So if the vendor goes belly up or goes rogue or breaks bad or whatever, do you have access into that?
I do not.
So who, who does?
The, the vendor. I, I have, I have it, but I couldn't tell you what it is off the top of my head. I have access to the credentials, but I have not personally gone into it myself, so.
Actually, that, that worries me. Just, we've had, again, everybody learns from their experience and our experience here was similar to, you know, water resources. That's exactly the footprint that we witnessed. And it went on for thirty, I'm not saying that this is your problem, that you created this. I'm saying that they did that for thirty years too, thinking they were doing the right thing. And then when low fuel, you found out, you, you were turning the keys to the car over to somebody that didn't have a driver's license. And, and that's the danger.
Guess I'm a little, so what's, how's Cardinal have anything to do with it? This is just between you and them, but Cardinal's using them sometimes or?
Cardinal staff was their time. So the days that they're not with us, they're at Cardinal.
But that's a separate contract?
Yes, nothing to do with us.
So then why are they listed on here on this contract? And why is it referred to customers, you're, they should be promoting the professional image of the customer's school district, which sounds like a Cardinal.
Yeah, I believe that they used it for the big contract to force them to direct.
I get it.
But when these techs are at Cardinal, then they're still servicing your, your needs, your people are just not visiting on site. So they are doing offsite.
Are you able to contract with ADP and what if he had cost savings if he did?
Well, they don't have a contract. They're, they're under the county. According to the AG opinion, this should have been done by AD, ADP way back when. It just never, ever was. They're exactly like Water Resources. Water Resources believed they didn't have to go under ADP because they've always operated outside of ADP. And then, you know, the lesson learned was that just because you've always been doing it, doesn't make it right. That, that's my understanding, what's going on here.
Well, to be honest, at a certain point, we were always the Reddit head stepchild. We were left out of health insurance. We were left out of a lot of things. We were very independent of the Metzenbaum Center. We weren't added to the county's health plan until around two thousand twelve or so. Metzenbaum Center has pretty much always been let alone out there. We have been bringing this thing to ADP billware as far as equipment. And we know every purchase has been brought to here. As far as staffing, we never thought that was the situation.
Yeah, and the issue with that, I think, and I think this is a legitimate concern from any angle you look at it. You know, approving the equipment you're buying that is under somebody else's liability is, is a different scenario than one that is on something you're liable for. So if, you know, if we were under the impression that you really weren't, you weren't a county agency under ADP, I mean, approving that equipment, how is that harming the county? It's not. But now that you are by law under the county's authority for IT services, now you are our problem. Whether we like it or not, and that, and that's something we just have to deal with. And I think the smartest way of dealing with it is first figuring out what do we have? I, I don't feel comfortable, I don't know enough to make a good decision.
Yeah, at some point, we're gonna have to. I'm more worried about the moving forward. I also have serious concerns about public resources being used for a private entity. Like, that's a big problem that you and I could discuss offline.
Yeah.
But you know, eventually, they've done the work, we're gonna have to pay.
Yeah, and this is already a done, I mean.
Well, it's through June, you know, so I, I mean, I, I would say maybe, what do we mean by that? We mean September thirty?
We are.
Here, here's the only thing that I'm, I'm gonna throw on the table and then I, I, I know where, I think I know where you're going. I don't disagree. My worry is, again, this board's history has been to uh provide a lot of rope to entities who are, and I, and take no offense to this. I'm not, I'm not sensing any resistance. But in the past, I have sensed resistance from other agencies who didn't feel that they were under ADP, but the law said they were. And the problem is, I don't have any more energy to keep fighting that fight. I'm just gonna turn it over to the prosecutor and say, we gotta do what we gotta do. Because there are a lot of promises that are made and then are never fulfilled. For example, we know Water Resources is now under ADP. But they committed to this board last fall that if we gave them approval to go till the end of the year with a vendor, I believe the vendor was called Mission, they would then come to this board January one with the MFA requirements of that product, as well as their configuration and their strategy to, for, for long, long password. And it would be in compliance with ADP. We've not heard a word from them. And here we are, almost the end of the first quarter. So, and, and they are my liability. And so I have to, my job is to say, hey, I, I can't keep being Charlie Brown in the football. I can't keep saying, yeah, we, we're, we're gonna do this.
No, I'm not saying, I wasn't, I'm not for approving this at all. I'm just saying, at some point, we're gonna, at some point, they're gonna have an unjust Richmond argument. They've, they've done all this work.
Correct.
I, I just don't like. I don't like the accountability. I don't like hearing that, that jog accounting tax dollars are being used for a non-public entity. I, I just don't like this. So that's, that's my decision. But if, you know, if we can come back at our June meeting, by then, maybe you could find out if you could service them. I mean, I don't think tech support for a year for a ninety seven thousand dollars is a bad deal necessarily. I mean, if, maybe you guys want to do that. I, I, I don't know.
Well, there's nothing in this, there's, I can't find anything in this scope that we don't do as a normal course of action.
I agree, but maybe.
But I don't know if the scope is accurate. That's my worry.
I get, my issue is though, if, I don't know what your workload is. It seems like your workload is, is, it's not like everybody's twiddling their thumbs down there. It's my, my take. Yeah, so I get my issue, you may come to the conclusion that, hey, for ninety seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm fine with that, but I want to hear that from you.
Yeah, I'd rather do that based on knowledge, not based on knee jerk reaction.
I agree. I think the larger issue is anytime you have a vendor that oversees all of your access and controls all of that, that's not a good position to be in. So the fact that, you know, they're paying for a CFO type person or chief technology officer, that's right off the bat, not necessarily needed. On-site client technicians, that's potentially a different story with more limited access. It's the super administrative access that always.
And the servers worry me.
That's what I mean, the super admin access. It's like what we talked to Nick Horst about, like, that's not okay. I'd rather Nick, who, who's technologically ignorant, have access to that versus a vendor who can then do whatever they want to do. And I think that that's what, well, we don't know. We're hoping that's what he's worked out. This is a similar situation to that.
Yeah, it bothers me that if you had a catastrophic upset and it included the loss of your vendor, what do you pass on to the next person that's gonna try to get your servers back operational?
Well, and too, I should state that most of our operations are SaaS-based at this point with using Microsoft three sixty.
Yeah, that's good.
Our servers are really limited to individual client documents, file documents, things of that nature, which I do have the access to the backups and things of that nature. But in terms of the physical servers, I can't tell you, I've seen them touched them.
Right. Are, are they doing the backups for you?
Yes, they are. But again.
Do you know where those are being backed up?
There are two sites. I do, there's an LGCA which is over here at Auburn Career Center. At least it's, one's there and then they have another offsite. I don't know, maybe cloud-based.
One, one of the other things is the timing might be good for some conversations, because we're considering, you know, going away from AD authentication towards cloud authentication, things of that nature. And started to have some of these conversations about, it doesn't even make sense for us to have a remote hosted arrangement or if we go for cloud, things of that nature. So certainly, you know.
Yeah, but those, yeah, those, the caution I give you is, those decisions should not be made by a vendor making money, because they will always move you to the most profitable scenario. I know that because I was in that business for twenty five years. That's how you make a living. That's not how government works. Government looks to first is security protection. That's our job. And so, you know, at the very least, I feel more comfortable if we had some folks go in and do, and get some sort of a report for us to be able to analyze to say, here's the, here's the, here's the landscape, here's what we think we can do, here's what we think we can't do, and then let's reach a satisfying conclusion for everyone. Look, we're not trying to, you know, you know, trap you or rope you or anything. We just want to make sure that we're protected and that because you're under the ADP authority now, we have to, we have to answer for that.
Right. Well, to that end, in terms of your comment, like moving forward, that's our big question is how do we make sure that our staff are adequately supported so they can do their jobs?
Here's, and here's been the, here's been the rub, I think, and then we can let this go. I, I think you, you can't rely on your history to be the benchmark for the future. Because the first thing I think I heard at this meeting months ago was, are you gonna put people onsite for us? Well, that, that is simply replacing what you currently have. That's not necessarily a better move. So I, I think the real, real solution is, how do we get what we need? However that looks, if that means people onsite, that's great. If that means we can get remote access through an engine, which is not only watching the workstation, but looking for nefarious actors trying to attack it, that's even better, right? Because I don't know what your level of cybersecurity is on these workstations. And that worries me, because I can tell you exactly what the level of security is on the county's workstations. And so. And that worries me because I can tell you exactly what the level of security is on the county's workstations. And so let's, let's, we have to agree to not let the history be the cloud that binds us to the future behavior. It's the mission that's supposed to be driving us. And I, and I think then that will work.
How many users, just under sixty, how many are onsite? At any given time, probably twenty, thirty, forty.
You, you, I'm assuming you use some sort of a tunnel to get in. They can get access to their servers remotely?
Correct. We actually don't have much server access. We do have a remote VPN, but barely use it.
Most of your infrastructure is on three sixty five?
Yes.
So, okay.
Almost everything. Cause you have extra storage and some other things too there. Yeah, so that just makes me question, I mean, the onsite technical support isn't as important because you are so.
Fifty percent of the workforce is on onsite.
Yeah.
Which is good to know. I didn't know that.
That changes everything. And I think, you know, you may be overpaying, you may be underpaying. We don't know. But we won't know until we, I guarantee you, whatever service they're providing for a nonprofit entity like ADP does it cheaper because there's no profit. It doesn't necessarily mean we'd use the same toolset. We have advantages to certain toolsets, which.
We're not in any way trying to say we're not under the people we're, we're saying. What we're trying to do though is, these guys have been good. It is the local school districts and so we thought it was the same, under the same things that they do for the local schools. Their budget sees it end. Can we make a payment and get it paid for your next meeting is June when?
The eleventh or the twelfth. Eleven.
If you approve then, how do we get them paid? I know Jim said, I'm awful on Richmond situation. They've done the work.
Yeah, I mean, eventually we're gonna have to get them paid, but.
Yeah, I think the difference here is ADP's board approving it then condones the action.
Yeah.
Unjust enrichment is an attorney telling us, you need to pay this, or you're gonna get sued. So it's, it's, it's the effective get out of jail free for me. I cannot pay this without ADP's approval or that lovely letter that I get saying, you need to pay this under order.
I just wanna make sure that they get to the end of the year and not, we try not to get sued. We wanna pay our bills in a reasonable time. These guys have been fair with us. We wanna make sure they get paid fairly as well.
Yeah, I'll write the letter to Chuck to tell him to pay the bill all the time, but move we table the.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second?
I have a second.
A second. All in favor of tabling agenda item number fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion stands approved. Majority. Okay. Agenda item number fourteen, we just tabled.
So I guess next steps would be we would get together, you know, have to take a look at everything?
Yeah, Frank will, he'll arrange it.
Uh, June eleventh. Next.
Thank you. Thank you. See, can you do these in a block?
I'm going, yes.
Cause the temperature is going up.
Sweating.
Poor Adrian's, if I read, I have a heart attack. I see the drip coming down your forehead.
Okay, so agenda items number fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then two, my fault, that are not actually agenda items, but are under other business, are two additional retention schedules for the clerk of courts out of title and then the criminal civil doctrine one. So those are items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, plus two additional ones. These were all provided in advance. Ashley.
Rolls right off your tongue.
Uh, Ashley has been fantastic. Obviously, we're coworkers these days and we've been working together on all this stuff. So she's been doing her part to educate the rest of us on records retention schedules. And so she's going to just very briefly discuss the need for the ADP records retention schedule, the prosecutors, the JFS one, and then the two courts ones that are included as well. So we can handle those in the block. So if you just wanna do a very personal, just keep it quick.
Yeah.
Is that good?
In general, departments can choose to set their own individual retention schedules if they wish to keep items longer than the traditional retention schedule requires. They can't go shorter than ORC, but they can choose to keep things longer if they find any. So in the case of JFS, they typically kind of evaluate and then do a little re-roll or swap as they need. Prosecutors, because they're coming from a new court, they need to integrate part retention into their retention schedules separately. Clerk of courts, Sheila, I have not been up on what you're doing with your guys specifically.
I found some additional things specifically for the clerk of courts in the Ohio History Connection that were not on the general schedule. And because I deal with all of that product and paperwork, I wanted to be able to have a retention schedule. So that's why we adopted that.
Um, and in the case of ADP, I believe there were items that were not on the traditional retention schedule that we needed to take a look at as the county.
Yeah, previously the records commission, which was myself, auditor, treasurer. Wait, which one is, one of these on, which one of these on records? No, you're not on records. You're on records. Yeah, the clerk, the treasurer, auditor, the prosecutor, the board of records. And then we would meet twice a year to approve those retention schedules. Now that those, the records commission and the microfilm film board have been abolished and ADP's taken over, we have to do what the records commissions do, which is approve the retention schedule. Any change to the retention schedule.
And for the record, that, the Archives Group has been, you know, more than receptive to, I mean, their adaptability was phenomenal. I mean, they, they were not, they had no preconceived awareness of what was gonna happen January first and, and ADP did. And their, their ability to adapt and was, was, was phenomenal. I mean, it's actually fun going down there. You're not mad at us anymore.
We're never mad at them.
Right.
Our job is to help you guys.
So, so just for the record, that our intention in ADP is to keep that division siloed. We're not going to perceive, I don't want to be perceived that they're just ADP. They're not. They're, they're a separate siloed division. Just like cybersecurity, just like networks, just like telephones, they're just a separate silo, like a division. We do that because there's so much confidential information contained in archives that I don't want the exposure of a guy working on a computer banging on keys or fixing a workstation for some other entity while there's boxes of court records or, you know, I, it just, you open the door for absolute nightmare. So it's treated completely independent from the rest of the organization, but they're just amalgamated up into ours. Any, any more than we will let somebody go into Zach's office and start poking around at the cyber stuff, right? Or, or, or Andy's and start messing with the network. So.
And the non-records commission people, it's, so if you want to change or add something to a retention schedule, that goes through you guys, you guys actually have sent to the Ohio Historical Society, History, whatever they call it. The hysterical society, that is joke. Uh, and then they have to approve it. Then it comes back. And then it would come to the board to approve. Yeah, so it's not approved by Archives, it's not approved by, by the Ohio.
To make sure that items of historical relevancy are protected, of all, everything else getting.
Okay, so we.
So I, I move that we approve items fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then the two additional records retention schedules from the clerk.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor of approving those items, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Seeing there are no extensions either, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, plus the clerk of courts, two schedules are approved. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to agenda, item number eighteen is the annual report for ADP. That has to provide to everyone in advance. Do you it?
So thi- this is for calendar year twenty twenty-three. So this is pre-merger of the Archives Record System up under ADP. So this report does not reflect any of that, nor should it. We're off by a day.
December thirty first. Any questions on the annual report?
By the way, we're gonna, we have to start incorporating now Archives Records Report by, I believe, April one.
Yeah.
Starting beginning of next year.
Yeah, so this is due by April.
We'll just make these as one, we could do one report probably, but.
Yes, we'll do two different departments. Yeah, so this is due to the board before April one, and then we have to acknowledge it to the VOCC by April one.
Yes.
So once we get up here, it'll be request for action, or the VOCC to, I don't, do you do request for actions for acknowledgements? I think you do.
I don't think so for acknowledgements. Let me double check on that though.
It will be sent over officially, assuming it's approved at this meeting, before April first. So it's acknowledged by the VOCC by then. It doesn't have to be acknowledged by April first, but you guys can submit it to the VOCC before April one, which you do. Okay, seeing that there's no further discussion on the annual report, uh, we will look for a motion to approve. So, the motion, is there a second? Second, all in favor of approving the GR ten eighty two thousand twenty-three annual report estimated, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion stands approved. We will give one to the VOCC officially. Thank you. Number nineteen is a MAXIMUS discussion.
Um, sorry, you want me to start this? I, I was forwarded a, a bunch of strings of requests for a variety of information regarding number of workstations, number of telephones, a whole variety of things, which I understand is used for, um, to be rolled into MAXIMUS to then do a cost allocation analysis. And then, uh, in effect, charged to other departments to recoup some, um, monies, whether through operations or not, sometimes grants, that kind of thing, to be rolled into the county's general fund. Here's the main issue I have with this. You know, a lot, a lot was learned during the last eighteen months when, you know, this board was sued that we had to, we had to read the law and, and try to understand exactly what our role is. As I understand it, and is, is the only authority that's permitted to charge for IT services is ADP. Absent ADP, commissioners can't charge for IT services. They just can't. It's unlawful. And I, I don't, I don't see how this isn't the commissioners charging for IT services. So I am very resistant to give data for something that I believe could be unlawful. That's, that's kind of my problem with this. So I don't know what the remedy is. Jim, you may have some insight into it.
Yeah, but what are you using?
It's, uh, it was a requirement, uh, I believe for several of the JFS, um, departments, funds that get money from the federal government. The codified financial regulations require, um, there to be a cost allocation plan that is in place. There's also, um, some administrative code in, in the state of Ohio as well that, that regulates that or, or references those same federal regulations. So it's just having a cost allocation plan.
Is it being used by the VOCC to shift dollars from levied funds to the general fund?
I don't know if it's, I don't know if that's the stated purpose for it. I think it's just because it was a requirement of the federal government in order to get certain federal funds was that the county has to have a cost allocation. And I think it was developed, this has been in place for probably over forty years, um, easily. So we were going, looking at things back from the mid seventies in regards to the cost allocation plan. So I think that's how it started out was just because we had to, to do it. And then I think at some point, it was expanded to several, um, departments that are outside the general fund that benefit from the services that the general fund provides, whether, whether it's through the auditor's office, the prosecutor's office, maintenance, you know, a lot of different departments that benefit from expenses that the, the general fund has. So in addition to the, the remain which should be paying me, but putting that aside.
Should we turn the air conditioning on now or wait till a little?
I'm gonna start keeping track of all the time I spent there. So the, um, I guess, you know, my issue is if, if you're going to the department on aging, for example, and you're saying, hey, there's a, there's a cost to using the auditor's office, using New World, there's a cost to using the prosecutor's office. There's a cost to using ADP. And so, hey, agent, you owe us a hundred and seven thousand dollars this year and that's getting transferred to the general fund? That's problematic. Because I don't see the, the, it's against the law for the Board of Commissioners to charge for providing technology. ADP can do that. ADP can charge aging. But nobody can charge aging. They're a statutory client. I have to represent them by law. And there's no provision in the revised code that allows me or anybody else to charge them a fee for my services. So.
Pretty sure that the prosecutor is one of the items that is, is listed.
Yeah, that's why I'm not giving you, that's why I haven't given you the information this year, because I found out this was going on and I'm not gonna be a part of it. So I, I guess that's my, that's my issue. I didn't realize that the same request is made to ADP. I know that.
It was made to ADP and then to Ron.
In the past, it was made to us and I thought it was for the four D contracts, but then this year I became aware that people were getting charged for the prosecutor services and then the four, the four D calculation, we were given separately. So I'm okay providing the, I'm okay providing quantitative information for the four D contract because the feds need to know how much time we're spending on child support. I'm fine with that because that's, you know, we get that money back. But you know, if you're charging you know, JFS or aging or the engineer's office for my services.
I know that the engineer, engineer only pays for liability insurance, their share of the liability insurance. Or maybe vehicles and equipment.
I mean, that's, I think, that's more in the realm of, hey, you have levy funds that, you know, we're gonna, I, I, that, that I get. I, I think the the issue becomes things that you have to provide. I mean, that'd be like, you can't charge me rent, right? So how's that different? Because you have, by statute, you have to provide people with suitable space.
Correct.
So how's that different than saying, by law, I have to provide Department on Aging with legal representation, but now the county commissioners is gonna charge those levy funds and put it in the general fund to, to, I mean, you can't do that. That'd be like me charging them. We need to snow forty for that. I mean, are other counties doing this?
Tate may be able to answer. I, I'm not sure how many other clients you have.
Who is the account from MAXIMUS who, um, has been working with the county for years.
I mean, you can, you can Google cost allocation in Ohio. I mean, there are other counties that are doing this.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with the cost allocation. I just think that the prior county administrator used that as a license to raid levy funds, which is what I'm finding out. And that I think is a problem for some of this stuff. Again, I don't, I don't really have a huge issue. I mean, we could research it, but I don't have a huge issue about going against your saying. I mean, cause when it comes to like auto insurance or equipment, I mean, they're probably our biggest liability, whether it be the sheriff. So you know, I get, hey, you've got levy funds and that's part of maintaining the ropes. Okay. But not, you know, hey, you use, you know, for your fifty different employee issues, you use the prosecutor's office aging department, uh, we're gonna charge you. Like, I don't see you can do, I don't think you can do that.
Well, isn't the same justification though for the, um, auto and equipment?
Yeah, but you're not statutorily, I don't think there's a statute that requires you to insure the engineer, ensure the vehicle.
That's it, we're done.
You kinda have to. Well, yeah, you do on.
You don't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's your loss, whatever happens.
But I mean, that, that I think is a little different than things that the statute would, otherwise, why don't you just charge us rent? I mean, you don't, like, you don't charge aging rent to take it out of their levy funds. How's that different than charging them for technology that ADP's providing or providing for legal services? I'm not trying to put you on the spot. It's not your scheme here.
I, I think that a lot of, a lot of departments that where we, we thought we, we could charge rent, we don't charge rent because we have the cost allocation and they are contributing, I guess, to the operations of the county through that. And, you know, us being able to, to not have to worry about having rent or something in order to upkeep buildings or different things like that, we just use the cost allocation to.
Well, well, we had, we had this. Well, we had, we had this conversation, Adrian, about a year ago. When I believe the director of the Jagga Trumbull Solid Waste District contacted me and said, why am I being charged twice for I T services? And when I asked why, they said, well, the commissioners are using Maximus to charge me and I, and A D P. Cause we have a contract with them, which is a requirement of law. We send them a bill and they said, we'd rather have your bill because it's cheaper. So the cost allocation mechanism was actually generating a higher cost threshold to them. And I think my conversation, she was pointing out exactly this O R C that says only A D P can charge for those services. And I understand there may be administrative code, which generally describes the authority of cost allocation. But if there's specific law that, that says something different, I believe you go to the specific law. Which trumps the general effect. You can't, it's not the other way. Am I right?
Yeah, I mean, like I can't charge the townships for providing legal services. I, I just have to by law.
Right. Well, we're not, we're not charging cost allocation services to the townships.
But, but then you can't, you can't charge aging or J F S either.
What, what are all the entities that here? Let's just take, this is an A D P board meeting. So what are you charging I T services? Who are you charging I T services to?
Um, well, uh, Metzenbaum plays, pays property insurance.
Oh, boy.
So they pay the, they pay their, their portion of the property.
Sorry, he left already. That one, we're okay. No.
Engineer is just vehicle and equipment insurance, uh, J F S, uh, public assistance. So they would have all the different categories, including prosecutors, um, solid waste, um, water resources, nine one one. Aging and the public defender. Those are the only.
So I'm looking at the, the case that I'm looking at is Campenella versus Kigga County. This is when they tried to dissolve the A D P board and the commissioners are gonna take over doing A D P services and basically charge people for it. And in describing that scenario, it says, it does not authorize the board of county commissioners to sell or provide these services. To any other agency or official. So absent an A D P board, there is no mechanism to charge for I T ser, this is, since this is just A D P. I mean, I don't know if there's a similar law for auditor. I, I mean, I'm rooted in statutes. I'm assuming there is something to that effect. I was actually told that it would be illegal for me to charge for my services if statute requires me to. So for example, when I was handling the park district, you know, my argument was you're getting it for free because by statute. I was you, your treasurer. Well, you know, just because they have, when they leave, they have to pay for a treasurer. I would have loved to have been able to start sending them bills, but I, I couldn't. It's not provided. So I, I think that's, that's the point that I'm stuck on with, you know, I don't think we should be doing what the law says we can't. And I, I agree that you've been doing this for a million years, but as we pointed out here, there's, we, we can, we can use that. Rinse and repeat story a hundred times in the county. We, we're really good at just saying, well, we've always done it, so we did that.
Well, I mean, it's written into the codified federal financial regulations.
But it's also written into Ohio state law. But it's in, but it's in state law, you can't.
Yeah, I guess it depends on what your definition of, uh, the, the words that you were using from.
What my definition?
I T related services. I mean, these are, these are not just, um, charges that are directly related to providing a service to.
If you're charging for A D P services, you're charging for the purpose.
We're not charging for A D P services. We are taking the expenses of A D P and we are lumping them into a cost allocation method.
And you're getting money for that.
But it's not directly related to their services. It's.
Well, it is if you're asking me for number of workstations, number of telephones.
Well, that's because that's how we choose to allocate the cost.
We can agree to disagree. I think when you try to argue this to a judge that we're really not using the, the, the detail, but we're getting the detail to generate the number. To not use the detail, that's kind of circular logic.
Well, I guess I too, if, if there are other counties that do cost allocation.
There's other counties.
They don't, they don't allocate the cost of A D P then, then I would probably agree with you.
I, I can just tell you that more and more I'm learning that most people don't do it right.
I, I just have an issue with, you can't charge people for services that they're entitled to receive for free. Throw around the word free, but that are.
Statute.
Statutorily entitled to.
And the Ohio administrative code is wrong.
Well, I guess, because of the cost allocation model for, for tracking purposes for whatever, I'm sure that. They probably put that in the administrative code because they wanted to know, you know, hey, counties, what are you spending money on? But I, I guess, you know, not if you're charging them for that stuff.
Yeah, I think Adrian, it may even be even different if you, if you argue that the person providing the service was receiving the money. But that's not the case.
So I can charge certain entities for my services by law. The only ones I can charge are the ones that I'm allowed to charge. For the Ohio revised code, but then there's very specific, that has to go into a special fund that's only used to fund my office. So. You know, you're, this is kind of going around, following? I mean, that's the issue I have. You're charging people that you really shouldn't be charging for my services, but you're also that mu, the people I could charge for my services. That money by law is specifically supposed to go into a account and only used for that purpose and it's just being thrown in the general fund. Yeah, that's who funds it, but it's not tracked.
Yeah, I could charge, for example, now that we determine M R D D is under the county, I can charge him for services. And the fact that you're doing it through a cost allocation.
We're not. They only pay for their property insurance. They don't get allocated any other costs of.
If they were be charged for I T services, that would be directing conflict to what, what I've statutorily been ordered to do. And I could bill for it.
Right. And, and the situation that you brought up with solid waste, um, we did recognize that as being incorrect. For them to, to have that and, and we did, and I worked with Tate to, to get all those things backed out of everybody's charges. So I mean, there are, there is a, a form that you guys fill out for reimbursed, um, service costs. And where those came from, and we have been backing those out of everybody's cost allocation. So.
So you, are you still charging Jagga Trumbull Solid Waste for I T?
It is I T, but any, um, um, well, for the cost of A D P, we're charging them an allocation. But the, whatever they are, no, whatever they have reimbursed you or paid you guys for, that gets backed out.
Oh, so you're charging him the, you're charging them the excess. Cause, cause here's the argument she used to me when she called me. I, I found out about this because Jennifer called me and said, I, I get these two bills. I'd rather pay yours because it's cheaper. That's exactly what she wanted.
She contacted me too.
Okay, so, so you're saying you've just taken the difference and you're only charging them the difference between what you guys were billing through cost allocation and what we're doing? So what, what?
Charge them direct for, for direct.
What would happen if then under direct, I charged them for a hundred percent of what we're doing for them and it's more than your cost allocation? Are you gonna give them money back?
I don't, we haven't run into that situation.
We can make that happen. That'd be an interesting.
I think you're undercharging them with the cost allocation.
Well, absolutely.
The cost allocation more than what we're charging for actual service work. I mean, we don't, we don't have a profit if we charge them what it costs us to do the work.
Right, but you may, if they don't have a lot of I T issues, you may only have two or three, uh, uh, issues that you have to resolve with them a year.
Sure.
Whereas you have all of your, um, fixed costs of providing and having A D P service. And they might have a lot of phones and a lot of computers that demand some of those indirect costs. Whereas, you know, you had fewer actual service calls.
They've already bought that. They buy their own computers. They pay for their own services. It seems arbitrary for them. Or say aging or J F S, but you're not doing this with the building department or someone else. I guess, I don't understand what appears to be the.
Well, we wouldn't, I, I don't, I wasn't here. So I, I, I don't think it would make sense. It wouldn't make sense, it wouldn't make sense for us to charge building department a cost allocation because they're in the general fund. So.
So it really is.
It is outside, yeah, it's, it's departments that benefit from the services of the general fund that are not in the general fund. And there are a lot of.
Yeah, I didn't wanna say that, but I, I understand.
Well, it's not really a scheme, otherwise every department that is outside the general fund would, would pay for it and that, that's not the way that it's happening.
Again, it seems arbitrary as to, there's only.
No, it's just levy funds, right?
Do you do?
Or enterprise funds. So you're saying water resources?
There are enterprise funds, yes.
What about Jagga Public Health?
Uh, no, they do not pay any cost allocation.
Sure, no rivalries, that's what.
Well, I, 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 to me, this is, I, I mean, I don't know, it's, I know it's out of the general.
Yeah.
You have, you two have to decide, this, I don't think it's a board decision. You two decide what, if anything, what, what. I, I would caution, I would caution the board of commissioners against charging for services that they're not statutorily entitled to charge for.
But the issue is it does provide the information. There's no issue with the information. It's how the information is that you.
Yeah.
So are you complicit in?
No, they just don't give the information. I mean, if you don't have it, I mean, that's what I've chosen to do, just not provide. Cause until I get some assurances that it's being used properly. I mean, they can make public records, but you have to, they're asking for me to create.
Well, we'd have to create a record as well. We don't track number of, yeah, number of telephones per se to a specific entity. We track total. If it's, here's the thing, in A D P world, we don't charge for what is on our price list. We can't by law. The law states we can only charge what's on the price list. So, you know, most entities that we deal with buy their own stuff. So we don't have the cost of a computer or the cost of a telephone. They bought it. We're just service providers in a sense.
Right, so, so those costs wouldn't be allocated to them because you guys didn't pay for it.
Well, well, the, the information you asked for, for example, was number of, number of telephones. How do you know they didn't pay for it?
I think what they're doing is they're taking the number of workstations and telephones. They're coming up with some sort of formula and they're taking the total cost of.
Exactly.
And dividing it as a per user basis type. And then, so that's why, when you, I guess when you guys are charging for your services, maybe you're not factoring in like.
Overhead.
For some insurance.
No, overhead, normal.
So maybe that's a conversation you have with the B O C C where you say, hey, maybe we need to change our price model here because we're not factoring in.
Oh, yeah, that'll go with me. Oh, yeah, thanks, thanks for that tidbit. I'll just.
Well, it's up to you guys to decide that, but I'm just saying that.
Well, the point is we are not.
Some county departments that request this cost allocation because it's required for us to have it.
Well, I'm not debating whether you can cost allocate certain things.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that I, my clear read of our, of the only entity you can charge for I T services is A D P. And when people think, no matter how.
I guess I'm saying the cost of A D P and the charges for the services, you could consider those to be two relatively separate things.
You could, I can't. I, I don't see that way, Adrian. I, I, I see you're getting money for something that we provide. It's kind of selling something. I mean, I, there's an exchange for, with goods for, I mean, good money for stuff. That, that legal thing?
I don't know. I just, I don't think.
I just have, I have a problem. I don't want to get in the weeds with it, but at the same time, I don't want to be complicit in it. So we're about to sweat to death here. What's the next? So I'm just letting the board know we're not gonna, yeah, other business.
Yeah, okay. Other business, Jen, I have number twenty, um, unless any board members have other business to bring up.
I, I have one quick thing. Are we referring to other people than me?
Yeah, probably.
So I, I have a little dilemma that I would like the board to consider. We have been, we being A D P has been requested on fifteen to twenty occasions in the last twelve months. To devote resources to initiatives that are not in the budget of A D P. And, and they are starting to eat me alive from a budget perspective. And I am fearful that when I go before the commissioners this year for my budget, of course, I'm gonna have to offset and compensate for this lost money. Because we weren't using it for the purpose in which we originally got it. We're using it for what I will call wild goose chases. So things, for example, like every time the commissioner's office wants to acquire a building, lease a building, think about leasing a building. Or we have just invoked resources. I mean, I've invoked Frank, I've invoked Andy, I've invoked Michael, I've invoked, uh, Burley. Everybody jumps in to try to get some good cost numbers because the last thing we want to do is throw out a number off the top of our heads. And then the deal goes through and I'm held to the number and I haven't done my research and I end up looking like an idiot.
Wait a second. So you run around, do a bunch of work and then it doesn't pan out because they change their minds or never tend to do it first?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I, I can bring Laura down.
No, no, this is an A D P. So what I'm proposing that the board, um, allow me to do is, I, I'm just asking that we don't. Invoke resources without getting a formal request by the commissioners. Which kind of means they've at least discussed it in open meeting and they've made some sort of a tentative decision. I know they're not all gonna happen. But the problem I have now is my list is growing and I'm running out of gas. I'm running out of money. I mean, I've investigated three different reasons to use the Opera House. I mean, three different groups, which means three different sets of resources. I've looked at the courthouse, the, the annex basement twice. I've looked at the Chase building twice, the three offices on the square, northeast side of the square, the three buildings once. And then one building a second time. Uh, you know, everything under the sun. We've been at four seventy. How many times? It's closing, it's opening, it's closing, it's opening, it's closing. Make it dark, make it live. We were just down there again recently, what, it's gonna be live for a while. I, I just don't have anything that I can write this off against. Um, this is like a Seinfeld episode. I don't know what a write-off is. And consequently, I'm bleeding some of my higher paid resources without any confidence that anything's gonna come to fruition. So I just wanna, I just wanna get the board to agree that it's reasonable to get, just like the commissions require. A request for action, that this board gets a request for action. And then we deal with it accordingly. Because I don't have infinite resources and I'm running out of gas.
If it's like a minute later than one week at a time, it'll be just be.
I'll give you a minute and a half.
It's gonna work exactly.
So I, that's what I'm requesting and, um, I, you know, my, my job is to, is to, you know. Operate the center, but I, I have to do it with some degree of certainty of what my costs are. And right now I have no idea. It's, it's just.
I've had similar frustrations and I require board action before I'll just.
Well, I, I have to admit, I didn't think of it as myself. I've modeled it after years because I, I just can't keep doing this. And I, I, I put up with it and I've done it and I, I just can't do it. I just can't do it. And it's not because I don't want to, it's because it's not cost effective. And it makes people think before they act.
I guess the problem with that is you only need quarter.
No, no, it doesn't have to be.
Any, any board member can request a meeting and I have to call the meeting within ten days.
Yeah, but you don't need board approval for you and Frank to run around these wild goose chases.
I just need to make sure the board of commissioners talked about it in an open session and made a decision.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
But see, the problem is sometimes you can't make a decision until you know all the information.
Well, then here's, here's, here's what I would then ask of you. You go with me to my budget hearings and let's create some, a money, a, a pocket of money could be held in the commissioner's general fund. That when I'm asked to contribute, I can bill against your money, not my money. That's fine with me. I'll throw the resource at it now, but it's on your dime, not mine. Cause I have to account for the money that I spend. This is money that I can't account for because there's nothing to show for it. If you're willing to do that, I don't need any call of action. I just need a bucket, just like we used to do when I was working at General Motors. Give me the project number to charge it to and I'll put the resources on it and the bill will be paid. That, I, is that a reasonable solution?
I don't have the authority to give you an answer to that. All I can do is say I can talk to the board and see what they say.
And actually, I'd prefer it be in your bucket than my bucket because then nobody can say my, my budget went up. It's, you're spending the money. It's no different than you hiring a vendor to do something, you know? They won't always do it for free. They have to, they say, well, yeah, we'll do it. It's five grand. We don't make a profit, so you're not gonna get that problem. You just gotta pay the people that actually did the work. We'll give you time sheets or whatever you want. I mean, how many hours did you spend on these?
That's my problem. I need to answer that way. I'll give this to the board. I'm gonna start doing that. I'm too.
Well, right now you do because.
A lot of it's my fault. I just go run with that stuff instead of just saying, you know what, let me talk to the board first. Which is what I'm trying to get better at doing. But they can't. I mean, this board will settle pretty quickly.
Well, I'm giving you away. You don't have to rely on the board.
Again, I don't think the, the A D P board needs to approve you spending, you know, uh, two and a half days at four seventy. But I think that the, the commissioners need to, you know, by motion. I think what you're asking for is the commissioners to say by mo, hey, you know, we moved to have, you know, we're asking A D P to investigate moving. X, Y, and Z offices over to four seventy on a temporary basis. So at least, you know, so when they change their mind five times, there's some accountability. I mean, that's, that's where I got sick and tired. And I, you know, the problem I was dealing with was. I didn't trust that the information was, you know, there's an intermediary there and I don't, I, I didn't feel that the inter, because I've got, you know, one of the Commissioners that have no idea what's going on. And so I can't have it because I represent the board, just like you provide services to the board.
I, I can live with either solution. Either action from the Board of County Commissioners or you guys pick up the tap for the work that we do. Either way is okay with me.
Well, I will certainly convey that back to the board and see what they say, we'll have some discussions and go for it.
I don't think the ADP Board is active, I mean, unless you want, I'm just, I think you and Frank can just tell them no. Just tell them pounce salt unless you give them what you want, so that's my answer.
Which pounce, pounce salt until I get what I want, that's what you said.
Well, so you get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I'll leave it in their hands.
And in that vein, Linda and I have talked the last week here, um, and this is one of those things where I thought, you know what, this is probably on my scope of authority here, but Linda provided me a formal email, again, without board action, which is why it's here, but just saying to ADP to vacate the conference room that we've been using next to the current ADP space. So I have a, a formal email from Linda, but I do not have board action on that, so I thought it was necessary to bring that up to the board right now. Um, but the BOCC has informally or, I, I don't want to call it formal because there wasn't action, but informally formally told Linda to tell me to vacate the A thirty.
And go where?
Well, that's what we need to talk about because we have six entities technology currently stationed in that area.
Where, where does the board like us, would the board like to give me suitable space?
Well, you have all the third floor of the Opera House because people are not coming there.
There's no elevator, we can't take six entities' computers.
I heard, and August.
Well, I was told to vacate.
This air conditioner is in process.
I, I was told to vacate at the end of the day last Friday, I did not. So without the elevator being functional right now, I still don't know what the.
You know, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe I'm crazy. You know, the Commissioners have loud and clear sent a message, they don't want ADP in their building. They've said that literally, maybe the solution is ADP needs to get their own facility and, and, I mean, we'll just have the board pay for it. But that's not best serving the taxpayers. Continually pushing people out of workspace because the building was.
Workspace, it is a conference room.
It's never been.
It has been and it will be if we have access to it.
Linda, it's never.
We have not access to it since fall twenty twenty one.
Frank, Frank, how long have you been in that building?
Since the fall of twenty twenty one.
That was being used as staging for, for technology while the building was being built.
That's exactly right.
That doesn't make it ADP space, it was designed to be used as conference rooms.
But Linda, two of, two of these projects that you asked me to investigate involved moving ADP to two other areas in that building, which never came to fruition. So clearly the board recognizes they need more space for ADP. But they didn't act on those spaces and now they're just saying, well, you need to get out now, well, why don't we just pitch a tent and go out in the parking lot? I mean, it, it, you, just the solution of getting out is not viable. Get out and go where? I'm already struggling with having Frank at the other side of town, moving him here just puts him further away from where his people are. This is crazy.
Is there other, um, conference rooms that are just not available that?
At that building, there are conference spaces that were designed to be conference spaces and they're being used all the time.
And isn't one of them occupied by the county administrator? Didn't we, didn't you, didn't you guys pay for ADP to reconfigure the conference room in the Commissioners' own space for Jerry to have an office?
Because there's not enough office space.
Exactly.
We gave up our office space over and over in favor of other people to have more space.
Well, gee, not that I feel like a redheaded stepchild, but where was original ADP space designed in the county building?
Okay, look, your staff has gone from nine in twenty twenty one to eighteen in twenty twenty four. That's not, yes, it has, I can show you the papers.
So, so you mean after you guys gave us archives at a moment's notice on January?
That doesn't count archives.
Oh, you didn't count that, that's, so next year we'll have, we'll go from nineteen to twenty four and it'll be my fault.
Look at, don't shoot the messenger, we have asked and asked to have our conference room back. It belongs to the Commissioners, they want to use it as.
It ought to belong to the people.
It belongs to the Commissioners by law as all the buildings belong to the Commissioners and this is, gets us back to the same.
So again, did I come back to this?
I don't know why we're arguing.
I'm happy to move.
Until you get a court order, don't move, that's, that's what I'm telling you. Don't move out of that space until you have a court order.
Come on, Jim.
Hey, you'll lose again.
Just don't make us do that.
It's fine, you do it, it'll end up like last time.
But Linda, you're not giving us a solution, you're just giving us a problem.
I have offered four options to them.
Yes, but there, there are options that I already possess, you telling me to move people into archives.
An elevator for seven months.
If you're only using it as a storeroom, why can you not use the storage available in the archive?
It's just, first of all, the, the archive storage is an unsecured garage.
It is not, that is absolutely one hundred percent wrong, those are completely.
Time out, time out.
Those are completely secure.
What you have to appreciate, Linda, is your Commissioners do not, no longer run archives. I've already stated to this board, archives is a standalone entity, I'm not going to co-mingle setting up a bunch of computers standing next to a bunch of records that are confidential, that belong to judges, prosecutors, and sheriffs, not going to do it.
Pardon me, I ran it for ten years, I know what's in there.
Well, then you should know that you shouldn't have a bunch of technicians working on stuff right next to a bunch of secure documents.
It's, it's, the conference room's not a storage area, it's an office staging area and it does store equipment that's going to be deployed in the short term. There's, there's five figures worth of equipment in there for my office right now that's going to be deployed at the end of April. Where is that stuff supposed to go between now and the end of April? And where are they going to have room to spread out and set it up because there's like, I don't, you know, thirteen, nineteen, nine people packed into this whatever that, I mean, you know, tripping over people and, and things every time I walk over into the that small space, that cave, that, that.
I think you call it a dorm room.
I did call it a dorm room, it smells like. So, I, I mean, I guess, you know, that's why I think you sit up front, get away from me as far as you can, I don't blame you. So I, I mean, like, where are they supposed to do this stuff? They need tables to spread out on, they need to be able to deploy this stuff. It needs to be somewhere secure while they're deploying it. And the problem is that it's, it's a constant, it's, you know, yeah, I'm at the end of April and that's probably a third of the stuff that's in there right now, maybe less, I don't know.
Or less.
I mean, when you did the phones, my God, you had, you know, you had hundreds of phones in that. So, I mean, where are they supposed to do this stuff? The Commissioners by law have to provide them adequate space. You didn't do that, they've been in that space since, since before the building was completed. So, and, and nobody's going to use it, none of those, none of those conference rooms are getting used, that, that, I have never seen anybody in that bubble one. I go in there and make phone calls and stuff when I have to go up to that building, I use it. That, like, nobody's using these conference rooms, they, it's just spite, they're just trying to kick you out of there out of spite and I, I'm sick of the petty spiteful stuff. So go get a court order, Linda, because you won't, so have fun, they're, we're not moving. Don't move, don't go anywhere. If you want to argue, if the Commissioners want to go to court, argue that they provided adequate space to ADP, I'll have fun with that all day. Because you still haven't, they still don't have adequate space.
I mean, to propose that we move back up to the Opera House when two of the fifteen items on my list were reconfiguring the Opera House for other entities. This is just a shell game. We're just moving people around, yet there's rodents, you know, in every one of these buildings down here that no one's considering and, and that's not suitable. I'm not going to put a bunch of brand new computers next to things where, where squirrels and everything else are getting into the building. It's like, I might as well put it outside or, or get me a trailer for that matter.
How long's it, when did it go there, something, August?
Almost a year ago.
Earlier? I mean, you look like you're in other shape, so it's, it's not all.
He's looking good.
Well, I know it's.
Clockwork, what, a year and a half ago?
It's been at least since August of last year, but it really kind of just finally died maybe about November where you can't get past the second floor, if you do, you're lucky. And, and, and you're, they're not, it's not really lucky, you'll get to the third floor, but you'll get stuck in it and you can't go anywhere. So you then have to start pressing buttons until something starts moving.
Is it, is it out of order right now, like it's shut down?
There's a sign on it saying out of order.
How many conference rooms are at the new building?
I think every floor has one.
You could talk with Tammy at maintenance because she manages that whole process so she can tell you what's there. We have the large conference area that was designed to replace building eight of which this is a part. But it has dividing things pulled across to shut it off from the rest of the conference space. There's the, uh, one, I guess we call it the fishbowl, it's got glass, there's one in the first floor that, uh, GFS uses, I think the Health Department's been using that some too.
Yeah.
Have you ever had a request for and, and not had a spot where they put a couple of things because there wasn't a room available, does that happen?
There have been events that have had to be moved because we didn't have enough space for them.
Moved out GCOB.
You would have to ask Kelly about that because she was hosting some health related things. But at the end of the day, I'm just here as a, a representative of the board who would like to have their room back and has been asking nicely for a long time.
I, I, I don't agree with having their room back, they want space that they never had to begin with.
It has never been used as a conference room.
Because it has not been available to us to use as a conference room.
It's just like there's multiple av- available spaces to be used as conference rooms and we do actually use it for meetings.
May I say something? Um, I'm working closely with Linda and with Tammy. Um, we're working on a conference room management system, it's like an app, which basically at the moment, um, in order to make a reservation for a conference room, Tammy gets an email, she looks at the calendar, she figures out which rooms available and it can be booked. Um, I'm trying to get it where it's an automatic process where if somebody wants to book in a, a conference room, it's on an app, it's online, they see what's available. Um, there are nine conference rooms in the, um, main building, there's two down, that are available, there are two downstairs on level one, um, there's the lunchroom, which is considered usable space on, um, level three, that's the, uh, Commissioner's room on the.
Yeah, that's, I was going to add, the Commissioners' chambers is used to like two and a half hours a week, but I've never seen anybody else in there.
That's allocated as a, a room.
Health was using.
They are using it, they met there last time.
At night, I mean, so no one's ever in there other than Tuesday for two and a half hours. So, well, like, why aren't we using that as a conference room? But, but it's an emergency to kick ADP out of the conference room that's never been used as.
Well, we, we know, for the last two years, we've gotten constant, you know, people taking photographs of Frank in that office and then a demand order saying, get out of my space, I, I'm done with it.
It's not their space.
If everyone wants us out of that space, let's just go find a building and move ADP.
It's not their space.
Problem solved.
And I, I can tell you from the maintenance room, um, from the calendar, I'm looking at that daily because I'm trying to move all of those, our requests into the, the main reservation calendar. I can't think of one day where every single room is booked, it's, it's just, it doesn't happen. And the, um, the main conference room, three, three, three and three, three, four, the main capacity is up to a hundred and sixteen people, which I don't think, I mean, I don't know, but it sounds like working with Tammy and with Paul, that's the max that they've ever had anybody request a conference room, so extending it out to, into that other little room that you guys are using, um, I don't, I mean, you want to see the projector on one end, if you're all the way back in that tiny little room back there, you're not going to see the projector, you're not going to see the TV, it's, it's using this, I mean, I mean, you can't really use the space that way, so.
Well, it comes with binoculars when you go.
So.
It's called the, the new Opera House.
And I think what we could do is in, in the next month or so, we've, we want to get this reservation system up and running, it will be a great indicator of how often these really are used, what's available, if something, and, and the good thing about it is if you've only got ten people, we're going to encourage people not to book the room that fits a hundred people because, you know, it does, it defeats the purpose, so which, we're trying to make it much more manageable and hopefully if there are concerns with that being not available, those concerns will go away, um, with this new app that you made.
So that large conference room, that actually could be divided even further than it is now?
Yes.
Yes.
So the larger one is three, three, four, and then, so that whole area is actually three conference rooms. The three, three, four, the three, 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 middle one, when then it's cut off to three, three, two.
So if, is there ever been such a demand for conference space since the building opened that you had to move that temporary wall and turn that main house from the two different houses?
Uh, I, I don't know yet.
For the health there.
What health?
They had like a trade show or sort of.
I was in there, no, there was all one room, no, no, I'm saying.
That was your question.
No, did they have to close that off to create two conference rooms because the air was so hot? That's, as far as I know, never had to happen. So, kind of my point is, if they've never had such a demand for conference space that they had to actually sub, subdivide that room?
I get it.
The way it's intended, why do they, listen, I, and we don't need to be that worse, they don't need the space, they don't require the space, this is all vindictive nonsense. Okay, so we just don't move, and then let's move on, yeah. That's, that's where I'm.
So what would it take to amicably reassign that room to ADP?
I don't know. To be honest, I don't know.
I know what it would be, but.
We tried to get other space from them on several occasions, as he referenced, when we were working with the Health Department. But once the Health Department decided that they were generally not combined, then they came and understood from Frank and said, forget it, we're keeping it all. So.
Yeah, well, it sounds like there's some future expansion plans with them too, and again, they've already donated space.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't be an AD, we wouldn't be an ADP in that building to begin with if Health hadn't given up some space.
Well, and then the other part, the other half of the space.
Was another conference room.
Conference room, that was part of the large.
We're actually in a conference room, we're in, we have two conference rooms, part where, one was built out.
Correct.
And one was not.
You're in two conference rooms and the old health.
Yes, there was no ADP space.
That's what's ADP.
It was a little workroom outside of a server room.
Well, it was designed, it wasn't designed with the data center there to begin with, that was something that was.
The data center was there, but no people were there to support the data center.
Yeah.
Because it was designed in a vacuum, people thought, let's put all the technology there, we don't need anybody to run it. Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Well, I remember you asked the Commissioners if you could move the ADP there.
Well, because that's where all the technology is.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And the users.
Well, we wanted to get the servers out of the hundred and sixty or five year old basement.
Which we're going to do tours on after this, yeah.
Well, and two hundred and thirty some users are there as well, that's another big issue.
But just to look at the positives, it's very good, the ADP is in that building. People do walk up to that window and get immediate help from a technician, it's very utilized. So if the Commissioners would recognize that, how advantageous it is, you know, and that can be pointed out to them, maybe they would.
There's apparently two people in that building who don't share that view and that's the problem.
I don't think the rest of you are the problem.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it's really, it's probably not a optimal space though, because you have a temporary wall that is separating it from the, uh, the rest of the conference room. I mean, that's probably not optimal space for five hundred thousand dollars worth of computer equipment.
Well, it's, it's, it's locked.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, it's a good point, but it's a better space than any alternative.
Yeah, the option would be put it in the hallway.
No, and lock it up the.
Or the garage. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, you know, we, we have to recognize that the first two employees who were on prem in that building were two ADP employees.
Yeah, I would expect that, yeah.
Well, I didn't expect that. I didn't get anything in my budget to put two people down there to start managing, putting the infrastructure in, that was not considered as part of the plan. Any more than was considered for the courthouse, it worked out, but, you know, that, that's what's, that's what's lost in this. For the eighteen months that Al and Von, Al Von Torsick and Andy were down there and then when Al left, Frank went down there with Andy. That's all been forgotten, but they were down there when it was cold, toilets were falling off the wall, if I remember, I think that's the one Andy sat on.
No, that was after.
Oh, that was after, it was not a good place.
I don't think you're ever going to live that.
I remember the text, bad news, the toilet fell off the wall. I guess that is bad for one of us.
You'll never be back to one of these people.
Yes, you will.
All right. All right, let's move on, any, yeah, any, anybody else have anything?
Where, where do we have a payroll?
Okay, well, that's, so that was not ADP, that was auditor was doing that. Um, we attempted to use an outsourced payroll company for better part of last year. By, by August, September, we recognized that there are no payroll companies who do government effectively. We chose the largest one, we chose ADP, outsourced ADP. Um, they by far have serviced more payroll than any. Um, they by far have serviced more payroll than any other company in the nation. And they're all about selling you, um, HR programs and nonsense, and they're not about processing paychecks. And we, so I moved Auditor, ADP, GIS, real estate all to their system for all of last year, had nothing but problems every month.
Fortunately, he used him as the guinea pig.
I was the guinea pig. I mean, we had, we had certain pay runs where we said, if they're not gonna get their check, it's gonna have to be somebody that works for me. Because I can make it up to them. I'm not gonna deal with everybody in the county. And I concluded in the third quarter of last year, this is not gonna work at this time.
So all of these things that we've brought, this IT management and all of that, are there no elements in those that can do payroll?
We're doing payroll right now using New World.
No, I mean, I, I, I will admit to you, when I came back to work after being retired for five years, I was kind of shocked that we are still filling out paper stuff. Are we ever gonna get away from?
So the part of service now is to incorporate HRIS in the future.
I, I may know, I want to talk to you about that.
But the sheriff's question was specific on outsourcing and automating payroll so we could roll timekeeping in. He was the hardest problem for us to solve because he's got so many different variants. And so i- if, be honest with you, Toby, if it, if it wouldn't work for me, it's not gonna work for you. And I just said, I'm done. So we capped out. It cost us, I don't know, five grand. It was cheap to try. It was worth the investment. You know, that's just what we dealt with. Um, we finally just said, I've had enough. We're moving on. So that's where we are with payroll. It's not that we're done looking. We're done looking at them right now.
I mean, if you guys ever replace New World, that would be a.
Well, we need to see what this cloud will do. The cloud solution is gonna change New World's entire back structure. So once we get into that, and Alan and I met today, once we get through that process, which is gonna be another twelve months before we're fine, right? Go, go like this, Alan. Alan's nodding his head.
Another eight thousand trips up those stairs.
We, we, we need to deal, we need to deal with that and resolve it before we start loading more into New World.
No, yeah, I, I'm not a big New World fan, you know, so trying to.
Really? I hadn't.
Trying to access that to do payroll.
Well, that's how we're doing it now, but.
Well, I know, but you guys are doing it. We're not.
Yeah. Thanks for the question, Toby.
Any other public comment?
They're all asleep.
For a motion to adjourn?
Um, loop to adjourn.
We are adjourned.